Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, June 1st, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the Office of the Planning Board and on the Bulletin Board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Roll call.
Before we go to roll, can we, we have to swear in Mr. Mercer as alternate one and Ms. Pike as alternate two.
Okay.
No, it's right there.
Oh, there, okay. Can you just repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Christopher Mercer.
I, Christopher Pike.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member.
And justly, all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member, alternate two?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will faith, I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government established to the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I just need your signed oath when you're done. Thank you. Now we can have a roll call. Mr. Christiano's been excused. Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser has been excused. Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Talente?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Council Engager?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Pike?
Here.
And Chairman Bava?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence for the troops serving here and abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have any minutes?
We have no minutes.
Any vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Any correspondence?
Correspondence. I got an email from the IT Department and they've asked me to mention to all the board members to please be very careful with your township emails as we've had a lot of phishing attempts.
Yeah, I noticed that.
And they said, they suggested that you only open emails from township employees and no one else on your township email account. The other item we have is ordinance 2318, which is to include apiary practices and beekeeping, and I guess maybe Sam would kind of walk us through that.
Well, just before we get started on that, because I know we have some new board members, so just sort of the role that the board plays. In order for the town to adopt a land use ordinance, after first reading, it's required to be referred to the planning board, and that review is not for approval or denial, it's for a review to determine whether that proposed ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan, which is a document that this board adopts. And then we communicate that as well as if we have any comments with regard to the ordinance back to the governing body. And it, the decision impacts the manner in which the governing body has to conduct their hearing, whether we find it to be substantially consistent or not. This proposed ordinance really just adds those uses to agriculture. That, you know, the notion of agriculture, how agriculture is performed is always evolving and, you know, sort of changing, and our ordinance doesn't necessarily always keep pace. So I think our ordinance, this is just an effort for our ordinance to keep pace with certain ways that agriculturals perform, particularly in communities that have lot sizes like we're dealing with in Howell. Doesn't change farmland assessment rules or anything like that, it just helps to broaden and better define our agricultural uses. So with, with that, I would turn to Sam and, and just ask whether upon your review, you find it to be substantially consistent with the master plan?
Absolutely. So Howell has a right to farm town, and is always encouraged any type of farming activities within the township itself. We find that this is substantially consistent with the township master plan and pursuant to the municipal land use law. And if you'd like to, I could go further to the ordinance, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but.
I mean, is this essentially what, beekeeping?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a beekeeping, it's allowing activities of setbacks for 300 setbacks in a neighboring
Thank you.
Any resolutions?
I have no resolutions.
principal structures, excluding the structure of the property of which the beekeeping apiary
All right. All right. So first up, submission waivers. Case number SP 1114, Lowe's Company, Inc.
is located, and the setback could be reduced to 100 feet if they're providing a six-foot
Hi. Good evening, Board members, Board professionals. My name is Jared Pape. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hileburn Pape.
high fence.
Okay.
Our office represents Lowe's Companies.
So this is common in a lot of towns that are adopting these ordinances.
We're here for a, for submission waivers, and our office had discussions with Ms. Newman's
Also, ordinances regulating chickens is also very popular in a lot of towns in sort
office this morning, and it's our understanding that she's prepared to address the waivers
of suburban New Jersey.
Right.
this evening.
Okay. So you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the So then what do I need?
A motion to find it substantially consistent with the master plan.
whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a May 18th, 2023 review letter.
So I will entertain a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
The submission waivers specifically start in item three and actually continue for several
John.
Thank you.
pages, and it's basically because this is really a conversion of parking to storage
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
areas, outdoor storage areas.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
So there's a lot of waivers, but it's given the nature of the application.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Having said that, as was indicated by Mr. Pape, I had the opportunity to review these
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Council Engager?
Yes.
waivers with their office this morning, and they have agreed to provide items 32 and
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
45, 33 and 46, 39 and 41, 42 and 82 on a revised submission.
And Chairman Bava?
They're mainly administrative in nature, title block on the plan, property owners, stuff of that nature. So given that, I take no exception to the granting of the balance of the waivers for the purposes of deeming this application complete.
Okay. So with that being said.
It's not a, it's not a public hearing, so if the board has no comments, you can just make a motion to either.
Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the submission waivers.
Okay. Can I just make sure the board speaks up because you are being recorded, so it's a little different than when you're home. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Council Engager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to recuse myself, Mr. Chairman. Thanks. See you in a little bit. Just come get me. Okay. All right. So up next, case number ST, SD 3008, Lisette Cholula. I hope I didn't massacre that.
Mr. Chairman, just before we get started, was that a recusal?
Yeah.
Yes.
He recused himself.
Okay, so let's just reflect that in the, in the minutes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. My name's Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant Lisette Cholula. This is a minor subdivision application, creating two lots on West 3rd Street, which is in the Freewood acre section of the township. We are creating one bulk variance due to the location of the existing home. I have with me this evening Peter Strong from Crest Engineering, who will testify with regard to any engineering issues, and we have Allison Coffin, our planner, who will address the variance this evening. If we could have them sworn.
Sure. If you could just get close to whatever mic you want to use, Mr. Strong.
You can pull that closer to you because that is a.
No handheld?
I do have a handheld if you want.
Or not. Hey, there you go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Peter W. Strong, S.T.R.O.N.G., with Crest Engineering at 100 Reg Drive in Millstone, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, if you could just briefly qualify, Mr. Strong.
Yeah, Peter, if you could put your educational and professional qualifications on the record, please.
Yes, I'm a 1971 graduate of Newark College of Engineering with a degree in civil engineering. Worked for approximately 10 years in the central New Jersey area, mostly in the Freehold area, doing land development applications for that period of time. In 1981, I started Crest Engineering Associates. I received my license in professional engineering in 1975, and it's been active, and it's still active since that time. I've testified before numerous planning and zoning boards in the central New Jersey area, including this board on many occasions.
Board will accept your credentials?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, if you could just briefly describe the application before the board this evening?
Yes, I have an exhibit.
Is this something that's been premarked, or is it new for tonight?
Sorry?
Has it been premarked, or is it new for tonight?
Well, it's actually the, the plan that was, the minor subdivision map that was submitted.
Okay, it's not colored, there's no color or anything?
That's it, yeah.
All right, so that's been premarked, so you can go ahead, we don't need to mark this separately.
Thank you.
So the, the property we're concerned with tonight is, excuse me.
Peter, if you just give us one minute, we may be able to get it up on the screen and they can see it better than.
Sure. There you go. Modern technology.
That's okay.
So the, the property is Lot 65 in Block 110.01, which is along the southerly side of West 3rd Street, just to the west of Route 9. It's currently approved with a single family, one-story dwelling with a shed in the back and a driveway out to the street. The property itself is 100 feet wide by 200 feet deep. It's in the R-50 zone, which requires 5,000 square feet per lot, 50 feet wide by 100 feet deep. So we're dividing it in half. The outline of the property in orange on my map shows the total outbound. The blue line is the subdivision line that we're proposing down the middle, and I have highlighted in yellow the existing location of the one-story dwelling.
Mr. Strong, can you hold that closer?
Sure.
Because that's it. You need to close it.
Okay. So again, we're, we're proposing to subdivide the property in half into two 50 by 200-foot lots, far exceeding the zoning requirements. However, that, that subdivision line then creates a situation where the front left corner of the house is only 1.4 feet from the property line, and in the rear it is 3.8 feet from the property, and where 6 feet is the required side yard. So we're looking for variances for that condition. In addition, the, the shed in the back is also closer to the property line than is permitted by the Zone Code, although that's an existing condition on the exterior property line, it's not something that's created by the subdivision itself. So that's the, the basics of the subdivision proposal.
Okay, Mr. Strong, I just have a couple questions.
Yep.
Well, actually, first, since that appears to have some color rendering on it, we should mark that individually, so we'll mark that as A7.
A7?
Color rendering of subdivision plan. And I, I just noticed, the plan is dated from December 12th, 2022, and it was prepared by Geller, Siv and Company. So if you could just put on the record sort of your familiarity with the plan, since I, I guess you did not prepare the plan.
I personally did not prepare the plan, no. The subdivision plan was prepared by Geller, Siv and Company. Geller, Siv and Company and Crest Engineering have merged, so that we are, we are now under the Crest Engineering banner, but.
Okay.
We'll see if we can prepare the original plan.
So while you have not prepared the plan, the firm that did, those people are with you now in the same firm?
Yes, that's correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, there were some questions raised in the CME review letter in Section 6, which we'd like to put some answers on the record.
Sure.
With regard to the subdivision history of the tract, there has been none. The subdivision will be perfected once approved by plat. There will be removal of the driveway that is now located on proposed Lot 6502. The applicant will agree to do that prior to any filing of the plat. Peter, in your professional opinion, can the subdivision comply with residential site improvement standards as it relates to parking?
Yes, the, the lot that will be created for the existing house would have sufficient parking area to comply with the existing RSIS standards, and the new house that would be proposed for the new lot to be created would be, would be required and would comply with the RSIS standards.
Keep your voice up a little.
RSIS standards.
And with regard to the new proposed Lot 6502, the applicant is willing to install drywells to recharge the stormwater, is that correct?
Yes, the, the proposed dwelling would require a plot plan and submission to the town for approval before it could get a permit to be constructed, and we would prepare drywall calculations to mitigate the increased runoff from the roof area and driveway area that would be created by the new house.
And there's presently no curb or sidewalk in the, or sidewalk, I'm sorry.
No, there are no, no sidewalks within the vicinity on West 3rd Street for this, surrounding this property, and we're requesting that we not be required to install a sidewalk.
Mr. Chair, just before we, we leave that request, and I don't know what the current status is, I know there was some decision that eliminated courtesy busing for schoolchildren within the township located in certain neighborhoods. I don't know whether this neighborhood is impacted and whether kids would now need to be traversing.
This one, I believe, this is, this isn't close to the high school, so this one shouldn't be affected.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that addresses the engineering issues unless Laura has any questions. The applicant did also agree to place street trees when we had our professionals meeting, so we'll put in the required street trees as well.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Strong, we have the very minor, but three technical comments. Do you agree to comply with those, item seven of our review letter dated March 15?
Yeah, the lot numbers and the corner values, coordinate values, and the tree removal permit notification, as well as the tree protection fencing, yes, we agree to all those.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would note is, should the board see appropriate to grant the waiver for sidewalk and curb, because this is a minor subdivision, they are exempt from the contribution under our ordinance.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Okay.
Chairman, at this time, we could call our planning witness.
Okay.
Allison Coffin.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Allison Coffin, it's C-O-F-F-I-N.
Allison, would you be kind enough to put your educational and professional qualifications on the record?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had my license and certifications since 2005. In the years since then, I've been accepted as an expert witness in front of boards in more than 100 communities throughout the state. I primarily stick to Monmouth, Ocean, and Middlesex Counties. I have appeared many times in Howell, though I'm mainly in front of your zoning board.
We will accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Allison, would you please address the variances requested by the applicant this evening?
Sure. The applicant's requesting variances here relative to the existing structure on the lot. The lot sizes proposed are more than twice the minimum area for the zone. They conform for frontage, the front yard setback is conforming, but the side yard for the existing home with the subdivision line, 6 feet is required, and 1.4 feet exists at the tightest point. There's also existing relief for the accessory structure where a five-foot setback is required, and that shed exists at 1.8 feet. And other relief that's existing as part of this would be the driveway material, existing driveways gravel. The driveway side yard setback, the driveway that's going to be remaining is required to have a five-foot setback, but it is currently 2 feet, and the driveway width, 12 feet, is required, and 11 feet is existing, and those are all existing conditions that are not altered by the subdivision. So the requested variances here are all bulk or C variants, and there are two tests within the municipal land use law for this type of variance. The first is the C1 standard, and it's commonly called a hardship variance. That's appropriate when things such as a lot's unique shape, topic graphic conditions, or a result of pre-existing structures creates a situation where the strict application of the ordinance results in hardship. The second standard is the C2 standard, and that's justified when the variances advance the purposes of the municipal land use law, and the, the benefits of the variance substantially outweigh any detriments. It's my opinion that the requested variances tonight can be granted under both the C1 and the C2 standard. So looking at it first as a hardship variance, the variances proposed in this application are all due to the location and the extent of existing structures and features on the property. The side yard setback proposed to the new lot line is the result of the existing dwelling's location on the site. The side yard setback to the accessory structure variance is an existing condition that's not impacted at all by the subdivision, and the driveway material setback and width are also all pre-existing conditions that are not altered or impacted by the subdivision. Looking at it through the C2 standard, this proposed subdivision does advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which is, will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, which these variances do. And purpose E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. And here, the proposed subdivision advances the purpose by providing a more appropriate population density. The existing site is substantially oversized for the zone in the neighborhood, it's four times the minimum lot size required for the zone. The proposed lots are still twice the minimum lot size required for the zone, but they're more appropriate for the anticipated density of the zone, and they're more consistent with the pattern of development on the street, which is primarily 50-foot lots and a couple 75-foot lots. There's, in my opinion, no significant detriment that's associated with the variance relief being requested. There's no negative impact to the character of the area, the residential density is proposed and appropriate, there's no relief requested for area width or depth of the lots, both of these lots are fully conforming and consistent with the pattern of development on the street. There's no significant harm to light air and open space, and there's no significant traffic, noise, odors, or other such impacts that result from the proposed variances. So for those reasons, it's my opinion that the benefits of these variances outweigh the detriments. An approval of the variances would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and development ordinance. The use is permitted and appropriate, the density is permitted and appropriate, so therefore it's my opinion that these variances can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of your public, and the, the application would result in an improvement of the site in a manner which is consistent with the larger intent and purpose of your master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions as it relates to the C1 testimony.
Yes.
How long has the existing residential structure been on the property?
I don't have the, the date of construction.
Okay. And two, when you're talking about the prevailing development scheme in the, in the neighborhood, I mean, how many houses are we talking, or how many lots are we talking about when you say on this block?
I, I don't have a number. I can, I can pull up and count them for you. I believe that there's a, an exhibit, the area map. So if you look within 200 feet, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4. But 21 lots within 200 feet of the site. 13 of them are 50-foot lots.
How many, 14 of how many?
13 out of 21.
And what about the other eight?
You've got a couple that look like they're 75 feet. About four. Another one that's about 100 feet, and two that may be larger, but they're on 4th Street.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, I answered to your previous question. My client believes the house has been there since the late 60s.
I, I can't hear you.
The house has been there since the late 60s?
What's the basis of that knowledge?
My client.
Does she want to come up and testify? Or, because I'm saying, like, if you, you say it, but how does anybody know? Or if you want it, leave it just as that's the representation, that's fine.
I don't need it as a representation.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind if I interject too?
Please.
Sure. So the variance is really being created by the subdivision line going down the middle of the property. So though you do have a, a burden of the setback being 1.4 feet, you're not putting that burden on an existing resident, it'll be whomever, if they do choose to develop at a future time, whoever is purchasing that property. So they'd be purchasing that property.
Still not.
With the knowledge of the 1.4 feet.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody up here have any questions?
I'm just looking at it logistically and, and the size of the lots and everything else, and I can't help but wonder if it would be more logical, now granted, it would just create a different variance in terms of lot frontage, but if you shrunk the lot frontage from 50 feet to 45 feet on the new lot, then you get rid of that setback variance and also give it a little more space between the two? I don't know if that would just ultimately look and function better.
I, I consider that as a possibility, because that does eliminate the side yard setback for the existing home, but there, I don't think there are any other lots on that street that's, that are 45 feet, and realistically, creating the lots is a more.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, I answered to your previous question, my client believes the house has been there since the late 60s.
I can't hear you.
The house has been there since the late 60s.
What's the basis of that knowledge?
My client.
Does she want to come up and testify? Or, because I'm saying, like, if you say it, but how does anybody know? Or if you want it, leave it just as that's the representation, that's fine.
I don't need it as a representation.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind if I interject too?
Please.
Sure. So the variance is really being created by the subdivision line going down the middle of the property. So though you do have a burden of the setback being 1.4 feet, you're not putting that burden on an existing resident, it'll be whomever, if they do choose to develop at a future time, whoever is purchasing that property. So they'd be purchasing that property
Still no.
With the knowledge of the 1.4 feet.
Okay. Anybody up here have any questions?
I'm just looking at it logistically and the size of the lots and everything else, and I can't help but wonder if it would be more logical, now granted, it would just create a different variance in terms of lot frontage, but if you shrunk the lot frontage from 50 feet to 45 feet on the new lot, then you get rid of that setback variance and also give it a little more space in between the two? I don't know if that would just ultimately look and function better.
I consider that as a possibility, because that does eliminate the side yard setback for the existing home, but there, I don't think there are any other lots on that street that are 45 feet. And realistically, creating the lots is a more longer-term condition than the house. It is possible that in the not too distant future, somebody may redevelop that one lot, in which case the variance is only granted for the existing structure, they would have to either comply if they took the house down or come back here for relief.
Anybody else? Any other witnesses?
Now we conclude our presentation.
Okay, so we will open it up to the public. If anybody from the public has any questions, please come forward.
Questions or comments?
Or comments, yeah. All right, seeing none, going to close the public.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any closing statements, or?
Just very briefly, I think the application is pretty straightforward, the lots are 10,000 square feet, they comply in all aspects except for the one variance, and you've heard the testimony to support the request, and I would ask that the application be approved as applied.
Mr. Chairman, just on the legal side of things, from a C1 variance perspective, one of the things that the law talks about, excuse me, is self-created hardship. Self-created hardship is not limited to the current owner of the property, it extends, it's imputed to the current owner, but it could be undertaken by any previous owner of the property. Mr. Cohen has stated that the house has been there since the late 60s or the 1960s during some point, but that's not been supported by any document or actual testimony. So I don't think from a legal perspective, the applicant gets past the C1 variance criteria. However, the C2 variance is certainly, they've certainly put on a lot of proofs, and I think from a legal perspective, the board can evaluate and move forward, either positive or negative on that.
Okay, thank you. So with hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I actually just have one more question pop in my head. With the setback being as short as it is, that's not going to impede the ability of either property to possibly put up a fence in the future, would it?
I don't see a legal reason why not.
The only thing I was going to note is if it's 1.4 feet off the property, in all likelihood, a fence could be installed.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay. And does that include a relief from the sidewalk requirement?
Yeah.
Okay.
I need a second.
There's no existing sidewalks there, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Lente?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mrs. Pike?
Yes.
Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Gager.
Thank you.
Where's Brian?
You can just give it back to me, I'll probably do it.
See in the back.
He went over there.
Yeah, Billy grabbing real quick.
He has to hold it real close, otherwise we're not going to pick him up on the morning.
Yeah, no, this is, this is still the, I think this is the next one.
With this?
Yeah. Yeah, because we got the, this is the color rendering. Just waiting for Brian to come back.
Peter, you're going to leave that color rendering for Chulula with me? Thank you. Yes, it is. And you could pull it closer to your finger.
Now, Rob went to get, going to get Brian.
Peter, coming in.
Can it be any bases?
Too many.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 base.
We're on vacation, man. All right, next up is case number SP 1104, 96 Industrial Court.
Mr. Chair, I neglected to put the eligible voters on there, but Mr. Leggio, Mr. Seaman, Ms. Tlente, Mr. Tannenhaus, Councilman Gager and Mr. Mercer were all eligible voters, and Mr. Greenfield, Ms. Pike and Chairman Babi have all certified, so everyone tonight is eligible to vote.
Good evening, board members, board professionals. My name is Jared Pape, attorney with the Law Firm of Hailburn Pape, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a continuation of a meeting that began about two weeks ago on May 18, 2023. This is an application for preliminary major site plan approval. We previously made a presentation through the testimony of Peter Strong, who reviewed the elements of the site plan, as well as Stephen Rodasty, who covered the architectural components of the plan. And at that meeting, we received feedback from the board members and board professionals, and we made a commitment that we would meet with your professionals and revise the plan and submit those revised plans. We did meet with your professionals and we did revise plans and submit revised plans, and I'll just take a moment to give an outline of what those revisions were, and they'll be covered more thoroughly by Peter Strong and Scott Kennel, who are here this evening. With regard to our traffic report, Mr. Kennel met with the professionals, including Mr. Chen, and based on their feedback, he did some additional work and updated his traffic report, which was submitted, and again, he'll cover that more thoroughly. There were some elements of the site plan that were also updated. The landscaping has been updated pretty substantially. There were some landscaping areas along the area of the building near the loading docks, which have been removed, which allows for the loading docks to be 60 feet, which is compliant. There has been an enhancement of landscaping primarily in the front of the building with additional trees that are now depicted. The applicant acknowledges that there's a requirement to install more trees and is requesting a waiver for same and has agreed to contribute to the Township Tree Fund for the balance of the requirement. At the last meeting, it was identified that there was a parking movement conflict in the parking lot, which has been resolved, and Mr. Strong will cover that in his testimony. Also at the last meeting, there were discussions about variances created by parking stalls and the septic system being located in a setback area. Both of those variances have been removed. The 12 parking stalls that were in the setback area have been removed, but parking is still compliant. And the septic was relocated to the rear of the building outside of that setback area. So again, those variances have been removed. At last, there were some changes to the entrance for the truck traffic, which will be covered again by Mr. Kennel. So that's a summary of our presentation. If it's acceptable, I'd like to move to our first witness, who would be Mr. Peter Strong.
And Mr. Strong, you were previously sworn, correct?
Yes, I was.
Let me just remind you, you remain under oath.
Yes.
And if you could just state and spell your name for the record again?
Peter W. Strong, S-T-R-O-N-G.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Strong.
So as Jared has stated, after our last hearing, we took the board's comments, the board and the board's professionals' comments to heart and went back and we did a revised...
Okay, Mr. Strong, is this a new exhibit for tonight?
No, that's right.
Should we have it?
Yes, it's A 26.
Okay, so this is A 26, go ahead.
This is the one that's up on the screen in the back. So anyway, we did a modified site layout and a color rendering of that, and I just wanted to go over with you the changes that were made so that you're clear with regards to that. And we had seven, seven basic changes to the plan. First, we removed the landscaping strip that was previously underneath the loading docks. That didn't seem to be something that anybody was interested in doing, and so we removed those, and we're planning to put those same shrubbery back along the frontage of the building along Industrial Court.
And Mr. Strong, when you say there was a lack of interest, that's because, I presume, the likelihood that they can be kept alive and thriving is very low?
That's part of the equation, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. But technically, we were required to do it by your...
Right, well, I'm just saying, when you said there was a lack of interest, I wanted the board to understand
Yeah, I understand.
What generated that.
You're correct. So we, and so we removed the shrubbery from underneath the loading docks, we're going to put it back along the frontage of the warehouse building. We revised the site to remove seven parking spaces from the northerly parking area along the entrance driveway to the office space, and we removed five more spaces in the back where we had slated a small parking area for truck drivers and that sort of thing to be able to park and access the rear part of the building where they would be working. So we have now 33 parking spaces, where 45 was originally proposed, and 32 is what's required, so one space more than we have to have, or than the minimum required, and we've removed all of the spaces from the front yard area of the site. And when we did that, we also added more landscaping to the areas, especially along the northerly property line. We added a line of shrubbery that goes along the whole area for the car parking spaces, as well as perpendicular to the spaces to screen the view from Industrial Court somewhat from the car parking area and headlights and that sort of thing. So we've made those changes to the plan. Oh, as Jared mentioned, we had moved the septic, the septic originally was in the front yard area here, and we moved it to the rear yard area, and when we did that, we took some of that landscaping out of there, obviously for the septic system, and moved that to the front as well. So that, what was the net effect on the landscaping was that we had removed 17 plantings from the original plan that we had, and we added 41 back to the new plan, so we've increased the amount of landscaping on the proposed site with this layout change. Oh, we adjusted the parking spaces in this area where your traffic engineer had pointed out, there was a conflict with the parking spaces backing out against each other, and we slid the parking spaces over to the south and eliminated that conflict, so that's no longer an issue. And last but not least, we flared out the curb return at the southernly entrance to the truck loading dock areas, so that we were able to maneuver two trucks in and out at the same time without overlapping or conflicting with each other, which was another potential issue that your traffic engineer had raised. So I think that was, I think those are the seven items that we revised.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
If I could just go back to, this was a comment Mr. Pape raised at the beginning regarding the, our tree ordinance. How many, how many trees were required to be replanted?
As I recall, the replanting was something in the 400 Trees neighborhood, and we had...
And how much are you proposing to replant?
I'm going, kind of going from memory, but I think we had something in the 170 range at the time of the original plan, and we've added another 24, I guess, to the plan as of this point in time. The rest would be handled by a contribution to the tree fund.
So then, I guess the deficiency is somewhere between like 200, 210?
Yeah, it's still significant, but we have reduced it as much as we can with the things we have to work with and constraints.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
No, I think you covered all of the changes, unless there's anything else that you would like to share with the board?
No, I don't think so. I think that outlines what we did at this point in time to address the comments from the last hearing.
Mr. Strong's available if there are any questions from board members or board professionals?
I have one question. One of the commitments previously was you were going to meet with Chief Lewis?
Uh, yeah.
Is that going to be handled by Mr. Kennel?
Chief Lewis is the...
Fire.
Guy, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I know Ken had met with, Ken Faiman had met with him previously, I don't think he's met with him again in the, since we finished this plan last Friday, I don't think he's met with him yet.
Okay, so should the...
Is Chief Lewis still there? Wasn't he retiring?
Chief Lewis retired yesterday, and he's as far as to say.
I guess you won't be meeting with Chief Lewis.
So whoever the new Chief Lewis is, I guess we'll have to look at this plan once we...
My sense, Ms...
He had no problem, Chief Lewis, with the plan previously, and we haven't done anything to narrow the driveways or create any conflicts.
You don't have any knowledge of anything that happened post-first hearing with Chief Lewis is what Laura's getting at. There was supposed to be a meeting that happened, so I would say, Mr. Chairman, if there's an approval, we just condition it upon receiving something from whoever's now performing those duties.
Of course.
You know, stating that the application is sufficient.
Okay, certainly.
And again, Mr. Chairman, as I had indicated at the last hearing, this is an application for preliminary, so I think that that would be a reasonable condition since the application will be returning to the board for final approval.
That's correct, yes.
Right.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
This, the Industrial Court, is how many, how many lots total that are, you got two, you got six and seven that are part of this, and then how many other?
The whole industrial park?
Yeah, well, how many other empty lots are surrounding this? You're not going to be able to see it on that, you're going to...
Well, there were, there were s...
It was eight, eight lots total?
There was eight lots total, but one of them, one of them was a realignment of lot lines with the adjoining neighbor.
Okay.
And another one was the open space that was...
That's the commitment for the open space?
Right, so that was...
So how much, how much more square footage is proposed for the future that's going to be built?
Well, there's, there would be, would have been six lots that you could have built on, but we're combining two lots here, so this is, this is two lots and it's 90,000 square feet. You already approved one across the street, Lot 4, that was around 90,000 square feet as well.
That's not even built yet?
It's not been built yet, no, but it's been approved.
Okay.
And there are three other, excuse me, three other vacant lots, which, based on the conceptual plans that we've been working on a little bit for those lots, I don't think that, none of them will exceed, I don't think, 90,000 square feet, and they probably won't...
Each?
Each, and they probably won't even achieve that much each, so another 250,000 square feet, maybe?
So that's where I'm, that's where I'm going with this. So you got your 90 across the street, we got the 90 on this, because 40,000 is his office, so we're looking at potential, you know, in the future, if everything was approved, a massive warehouse. a, you know, a massive warehouse area. Because I'm just, you know, just concerned with, with the flow. I know we haven't gotten the traffic yet, but that's, you know, has everything sold or nothing, you know?
No, nothing's, nothing's being sold and.
I mean, resold? Are they, do you just want to get the approvals and sell them?
Um, my understanding is that they're planning to build the two, these two lots, the ones that were already approved and this one, if they gain approval in the, not do this in the future, the other three, I'm, I'm not sure about.
And the one, the one across the street, the nine, the, the other, the other one that's 90,000, does that have a tenant yet?
No, well.
So it's the same thing?
I think, I think that the gentleman who runs the Janico service, which is, has an existing building on Industrial Court and is, is attached to the, the one that was approved, he's, he's planning to take a good portion of that building for his business to expand his business.
All right. Like I said, I just, you know, just looking at the overall size of the entire thing is, you know, for the future is massive, that's all.
Well.
All right.
Anybody else?
I was just looking at, and I may have missed it. If I did, I apologize. But I'm assuming with the circulation plan, tractor trailers WB 50?
Tractor trailers would be WB 62.
62, okay.
Anybody? Okay.
Yeah, if we could have Mr. Kennel sworn, we'll move to our next witness.
Hey, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state, spell your name for the record.
Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonough and Ray Associates located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've testified in over 1,000 site plan applications in over 100 municipalities. And I've testified before this board as well as the housing board on a number of occasions. And I've been qualified by the New Jersey Superior Court on four land use matters as a traffic expert.
We will accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennel, can you confirm that you have assisted in the preparation and review of the circulation plan that is being presented this evening?
Yes, I was involved.
And can you explain the circulation outside?
Well, this site's been developed, and as Mr. Strong indicated, we have two separate areas. The northern area of the site adjacent to the office portion of the building has the main parking field with an island that allows, again, two-way traffic flow to and from Industrial Court. And it's been designed and will accommodate smaller trucks such as FedEx or UPS trucks for daily deliveries to the office component of the building. As far as the southerly portion of the site, that's where we have the 11 loading docks and that would be the loading dock area for WB, maximum sized trucks of WB 62. And we've modified the design to address the comments raised by Mr. Chen to allow truck traffic to enter and exit simultaneously should that occur. And we're also providing approximately five parking spaces adjacent to Industrial Court that are generally used for employees of the warehouse portion of the site. An important element of this design on the south side is that it has pavement area that extends in an easterly direction. So it better accommodates the truck movements into the loading docks as they enter in from Industrial Court. So as a result of the modified design, it's my opinion that this site has been designed to safely and efficiently accommodate the tractor trailer vehicles as well as passenger vehicles that are be generated by this site. If you want, I can go into my traffic impact analysis and.
Yes, please.
We originally prepared a traffic impact study dated February 9, 2022. Based on the comments from Mr. Chen, we updated that traffic study. And the main focus of that was to update the traffic counts. When we were engaged by the applicant, we conducted our counts in June of 2021. And Mr. Chen felt that it would be best to update those traffic counts, given that we were in, you know, going through the pandemic at that time. Schools are still in session, but to accurately reflect current traffic conditions, updated traffic counts were conducted on Howell Road, Vanderveer Road, and County Route 524 on May 23rd and May 25th last month. So we established and used that data as our base traffic volumes. And from there, we then, and let me also go back. As part of our traffic investigation, we do an investigation in inventory traffic conditions on the roadways that we're analyzing. And both Vanderveer Road and Howell Road have a four-ton weight limit. And by reviewing the ordinances that were passed by the town council many, many years ago, those weight limits were put in place to prohibit through traffic. In other words, trucks going from Route 33 down to 524 or through movements on Vanderveer Road from Howell Road to 524. The state statute, though, permits local truck deliveries. So in other words, truck traffic destined to Industrial Court by state statute is permitted to utilize those roadways because it's to facilitate access to those permitted uses on Vanderveer Road. And again, this was presented as part of the 90 Industrial Court application based on questions that were raised by the board members and, and the professionals. Once we have the base traffic volumes, we then developed traffic projections for the, for the 94,526 square foot building. And as stated, there is a, approximately 5% of the building has an office component of 4,176 square feet. And the remaining bill, portion of the building will be warehouse, which is 90,350 square feet. And by utilizing trip generation rates established by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, we came up with projections for the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour with approximately 42 trips during the morning and 44 trips in the afternoon. As far as traffic assignments, based on existing roadway network, traffic patterns, we determined that approximately two-thirds of the traffic would be oriented towards Howell Road to Route 33. And then the balance, or a third, would be oriented to the south towards County Route The next step was to assess the traffic conditions with this building constructed and fully occupied. We considered a design year of 2028. And the first step is to consult background traffic growth rates established by NJDOT. And the roadways adjacent to this site are consistent, are, are qualified as collector roadways. And based on NJDOT data, that is a 2.5% per year growth rate. And using the protocol that they have established, we considered a 10% growth rate, 2 to 2023 traffic volumes. In addition, we considered the vacant space that was, that's in the building that's on Lot Two and, and developed traffic generation, traffic projections for that building. Also, there is on Lot One, there is a 40,000 square foot building that was recently constructed. So we developed traffic projections for that building. And then as Mr. Strong just stated, for 90 Industrial Court or Lot Four, the board approved a warehouse building that was, that is 70,320 square feet. So we considered the traffic projections from that building and surcharge that on to the study locations. And looking at the intersection of Industrial Court and Vanderveer Road with the site traffic and the other traffic that I mentioned, as well as traffic growth, that intersection is proposed to operate at a level service B with approximately 11 seconds of average delay. And the same thing in the afternoon, a level service B, well within acceptable range. As far as the intersection of Adelphia Road and Vanderveer Road, that intersection is projected to operate a level service C or approximately 16 seconds of average delay during the morning peak hour. And in the evening, it'll be a level service C again with average delay of approximately 20 seconds. As far as the intersection of Howell Road and Vanderveer Road, that's projected to operate a level service B for both the morning and afternoon peak hours with average delay of 13 seconds in the morning and 12 seconds in the afternoon. All operating well within acceptable ranges when consideration of the Monmouth County standards and industry standards. As far as the site plan, I've, I spoke, I spoke about that earlier. And as Mr. Strong indicated, the township ordinance requires 32 parking spaces and we're providing 33. I think one other item that we'll have to address when we go to final, we don't identify any EV parking spaces. Based on the state statute, we're required to provide one. We're on all likelihood provide two because the way the, the installations are is that you can feed off, have one power source that'll feed two spaces. And that in essence concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Kennel. He's available if there are any questions for.
Mr. Kennel? The exemption for deliveries, and, and we had discussed this when we had a TRC. Is there a particular cite to the administrative code that you have for that?
Yes, there is. It is, the citation is NJSA 40:67-16.1.
And does it define what a delivery is in there?
It defines deliveries as trucks that have a destination within those, on those roadways that have their weight restrictions.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gujara?
Yes.
Wasn't there, with our, with our traffic guy from the last meeting, wasn't there some kind of? Oh, I'm sorry. With the questions that you guys were raising from last time?
All right. Mr. Kennel, with regard to the traffic counts you conducted last month, were those, were those traffic counts on May 23 and May 25, were those traffic counts on weekdays?
Yes, specifically, May 23rd was a Tuesday. The counts were conducted from 7:30 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And that was at the intersection of 524 and Vanderveer Road. And on May 25th, from 7:30 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM, the counts are conducted at Howell Road and Vanderveer Road.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that I reviewed the updated traffic counts and the trip generation that Mr. Kennel provided on, earlier this week, I believe it was, Tuesday, two, two days ago. I have no issues with regard to the traffic and the trip generation within that revised report.
So just while we're on all of that, and I would ask Mr. Kennel, as well as Mr. Chen, if you could just exclusively talk about ingress and egress to the site and the safety of the ingress and egress?
As far as the site's concerned, Industrial Court eventually will be extended to the south to intersect Vanderveer Road at a second point. Our analysis was based on just the, the existing intersection of Vanderveer Road and Industrial Court. And we surcharge all the traffic to that one location, resulting in level service B. Based on the current configuration, in my opinion, there is adequate site distance and that it can operate safely and efficiently with the development of this proposed building.
And, Mr. Chen, I would just ask you to comment on that?
I, I reviewed the, the revised plan, the revised color plan that shows the updated turning movements into, into and out of the site. I do not have any issues with the, how the, the depiction of the trucks entering and exiting at the same time.
Okay.
Mr. Chen? You, you obviously physically visited the site and then how about, just bear with me for a second because this, 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 we keep, we keep doing this every time with, with the, with the, with the flow. The big warehouse at the end of the road, at the end of Howell Road, that the board denied and then we were overturned by the court. The biggest issue with that was making sure no tractor trailers were coming out to Howell Road. So they forced everything to go out of the back of the property after Oakusin to go to Route 33. Okay? That's one thing. That intersection right there at Route 33 and Howell Road, okay? I was there three times this week. Actually, I go there every morning because I drop my son off at, at Coltslake High School. And I come from Route Nine and I come, that's the way I come. Okay? The intersection there, there is no improvements being made there for a successful turn of a tractor trailer to go right onto, you know, eastbound side of 33. The, I've seen trucks sitting there and they have to get into the left lane to swing right. And that's if, if there's no cars coming west, you know, without going onto, you know, oncoming traffic. So that intersection's an issue for me. You know, I understand from, you know, the professional testimony, the road is a right of way. It's permitted use as far as what we're doing here. But we're adding now these trucks and future trucks because we don't know what's going to get built there yet or when it's going to get built, who the tenants are going to be, how many trucks. All this traffic testimony is, you know, like I've, I've made comments in the past about the traffic testimony, really the numbers don't, doesn't really matter because we don't know who the tenants are going to be. Are we, are we operating 24/7? You know, the trip generation doesn't make any sense if there's no, no tenant yet. But that's, you know, that's, that's the other issues. Okay, let's go back down the road. Vanderveer, when it meets Howell Road, has a bend to the right. Okay? So making a left with these tractor trailers heading to Adelphia Road, which we don't want the trucks going to because of the schools and the buses and everything else, that intersection is not being improved. So there's a left-hand turn issue there. The right-hand turn is, is an easier flow. Even though Howell Road has no shoulders, it's crowned, soft arms, some residential, et cetera. Okay? Then when you get to Route, when we get to the Route 33 extension, the trucks can't make the left to go west because of the way it's curved and, and garrailed. Okay? It would actually be better if they could do that. So that's, you know, number two. Number three, Adelphia Road, when the trucks meet Adelphia Road, to make a right to go to Route Nine, there's tractor trailers are not making that turn in the existing state. Okay? You're not fitting a tractor trailer there plus a passenger car and then vehicles making a left-hand turn onto, oh, you know, Howell Road to proceed to 33 or wherever else we're going. So.
Mr. Leggio, if I could, because you're throwing a lot of things out there. Number one, the only thing I want to point out is because this is a permitted use, we're not really, we don't really have the ability to continue to look off-site. But having said that, I, I think you brought up a couple of points that I'd like to get the traffic engineer to address directly. So you're talking about, you know, impacts and how the trucks are going to go, all of which I think are valid and we should hear directly from Mr. Kennel on. But I do just want to point out that because this is a permitted use, our limited jurisdiction here is really safety at site ingress and egress, which would be limited to Industrial Court. Now, we've looked at other circumstances and other projects where we've had concerns. We've brought them up and we've been able to potentially mitigate those. But I do just want to indicate because it's a permitted use, we're really limited to looking at site safety at ingress and egress to the site. Having said that, and just, you know, hearing Mr. Leggio's concern, can you address the circulation patterns, the. circulation patterns, the adequacy of that, the maneuvers that would be anticipated for the tractor trailers?
Just one more thing before you go, and I want to hear, I want to hear what you have to say. Okay, we always bring up safety, 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 all right? We, you know, we usually have a packed place here, people always screaming about their kids and the buses and, you know, standing outside and, you know, so none of that matters anymore because all we have to focus on is the ingress and egress from Industrial Court. My concern, sir, as a resident, okay, as a father, okay, and I know it's, we're not really supposed to go there, but I'm going there, is the safety at these other three points, okay? They need to be addressed, and whatever we're allowed to do here and not allowed to do here, it's a major concern. We don't even have the building built yet. You've got 90,000 square feet across the street that's not built yet. We have existing stuff there, and I saw the three times I visited the site this week, I sat there, I saw what came in and out, okay? At the current state that's there, very limited on tractor trailers. A lot of FedEx, a lot of UPS, smaller straight axle trucks, okay? It is what it is. It's an industrial court. But I am looking as a resident, as a taxpayer, okay, beyond that, to the safety of these roadways, okay? The permitted thing is one thing, but the flow on all these roadways is another. Are we, you know, at the end of the day, when this is all built, if it gets built and everything else gets built, you know, how much of a hazard is all that going to add to Vandervier, 524, Route 33? You know, I actually, today, when I was there, I went there today, and I actually made a left out of Industrial Court and went up to Bennett, and I made a left onto Bennett, and I went out to Fairfield. Fairfield has one massive warehouse that's already built with no tenants, and two more that are coming, okay, with other industrial parks, okay? If this was to be approved, instead of the flow going out to Howell Road and to 524, you know, maybe we should consider the flow going to Bennett, back to Fairfield, because the access to Route 33 there is a hell of a lot better than what we're proposing here if we got 41, 42 coming, 44. And that, listen, those aren't even the real numbers, okay? All this, the traffic study and the DOT and all our graphs and all that stuff that you guys put up, okay? And I, you know, Mr. Chen, thank you for updating the, you know, doing this study from the COVID when the roads were dead, okay? And then as far as the times are concerned, I think your times are off. We need to add two hours more in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, because that's really the heavy part of the flow over there. And were the counts done by hand, or were they done by ATRs, by the counters?
They were manual counts.
Man, you're supposed to be standing there.
They are stationed out there, staff that's been doing this for many, many years.
Well, I'm not questioning your ability of counting, okay? We could get a bunch of second graders from Adelphia School to count there too with crayons and books, all right? Well, my question is, is the real number of the flow and the real number of the impact of 524, Vandervier, Howell Road, and Route 33? But Mrs. Newman, like I said, you brought up the point that we were really not supposed to go there, but then who is supposed to go there?
I can tell you.
Go ahead.
That it's governed by the municipal land use law, and it's not a local ordinance, it's not a county regulation. This is how the courts for the past 40 years maybe have interpreted the municipal land use law. It's a famous case called Duncan Donuts v. North Brunswick Zoning Board of Adjustment. There's also a case called Lionel's Appliance, and what they said in those cases is that when you have a permitted use, it is presumed, again, their language, not mine, it is presumed that a governing body considered the impact to overall traffic. What a governing body did not necessarily consider under the case law is whether the ingress and egress from a particular site within a zone was safe or unsafe. So once there is a use that is permitted, the municipal land use law, and, you know, we've, actually, my office, we did a bunch of research on this very recently because this comes up in a lot of applications now of a similar nature in various towns, law has not changed in that 40-year period. So if there was a decision that you could look at off-site, that would have to be an amendment to the municipal land use law that our legislature and governor would have to implement, so...
Well, good luck with that. But, you know, we got residents that are standing out there, you know, with their kids waiting for the buses and, you know, everything else that goes along with these projects, you know? I mean, ultimately, our failure as a township lies with our master plan from years ago with certain areas that were permitting this and not permitting this, so here we are now, again, stuck with a permitted use in the, you know, in the middle of nowhere, that takes miles to get to where they want to go to access a freeway, you know, or a minor, you know, that was a minor freeway. Route 33 is just completely out of control, you know, east and west, but, you know, you go back with your testimony, sir.
I'll try to remember all your comments and respond to them as best I can. But as far as the traffic projections, it's my opinion, based on extensive research we've done at existing facilities to substantiate what is the industry standard trip rates that are approved by Monmouth County and NJDOT, that the traffic projections we have here, in my opinion, are going to be on the high side, just based on experience, and that was done so we could do a conservative, a worst-case conservative analysis. So I'm very confident with the traffic projections, not knowing what the tenants are, based on my almost 40 years of experience and doing research count at similar type of developments. As far as the off-site location, and I guess I'll address Route 33 and Howell Road, that's a state intersection, and as the board attorney indicated, that's an off-site location. If there is a situation there that is, needs to be rectified, that's where the mayor and council would initiate a problem statement or contact NJDOT to review that. But it's, again, it's beyond our responsibility, given the case law.
Yes, that's really convenient for you guys to have that, you know what I mean? At all three sites or whatever, you know, it's just, you know, like I said, at the end of the day, taxpayers and the people that use the roadways are the ones suffering with the flow and, you know, the added traffic and, you know, like I said, it's just like beating a dead horse with these issues. I sat on this board for two years, for two years before COVID, and this is what we did and what we had here, and it's, it is what it is. It's just the off-site, I feel these applicants, your applicant who's paying you a lot of money to represent them, should bear some responsibility to improve our roadways. You've got, you know, these trucks are going to destroy these roads, you know, in the future, and then it's the Howell taxpayers that are on the hook for everything, you know? Even the intersections, you know, there's millions of dollars going into this. We can't improve those intersections a little bit as a sign of good faith to the township? When you have other stuff coming down the bike is my question to your applicant, you know what I mean? That's all, you know, am I asking questions that are just not fit for this? I just, do you understand my frustration?
I hear your frustration.
You know, but no one, no one, no one has any answer when it comes to, well, who's going to fix the intersections? Who's going to be responsible when a bus hits when his tractor trailer's set on? Who's, you know, I'm...
But he did. It's on him.
Well, he's counsel to change it, sure.
So it's up to him to go to the mayor and the rest of the council, and, you know, so that's your answer right now. It's him.
I have a question for Ron.
Sure.
Ron, in the case law, the terms ingress and egress, are they specifically defined?
Yeah, so we actually looked very closely at that just this week to see whether I could get out 200, 300 feet from where an access drive was, or maybe even more. No, no, they don't define it as anything more than the actual place where you are ingressing and egressing from a property. We looked, my associate Austin and I looked at a massive amount of case law this week to try and find something that permitted under any circumstance, and we were unable to find that.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to what he says, and I understand Mr. Kettle's position too as far as the law goes. 40 years is a long time. I think the time has come that it needs to be addressed, and from the mayor and council point of view, we are speaking to the legislator about it right now. We've spoken to Keane, and he's going to probably be doing something to try and change that. Will it happen? I don't know, you know? I don't know. I look at it as a common sense kind of thing. I understand his frustration and everybody else's, because it seems like we're getting a lot of applications that, I want to use the word hide, but it's the proper word, hide behind that law. I just have one thing for you, but I think you've kind of addressed it already. So you've done all these traffic studies really based upon a building that hasn't been built yet, and we don't know what's going to go in there or what the traffic volume is going to be?
That's correct. The tenants are unknown, so it's on a speculative nature based on the approved traffic generation rates.
Okay. Mr. Chen, I have a question for you. Is there any recommendations that you think should be made with regard to any permitted traffic that is going in and out of this project?
I believe, I would like to make the recommendation that the trucks entering and exiting the site should follow the shortest path available to the Route 33 and the large freeways that they're, that they, that the, like the larger order roads and freeways that they really belong on.
All right, well, the shortest route, yeah.
Can I just ask, when you say the shortest route available, is that a floating concept that could change from day to day, or is that something, you know, looking at just the amount of space that you have to travel, and that's what you're talking about?
Unfortunately, I'm thinking, I'm thinking right now, as I'm trying to make this recommendation as best I can, I think I'm talking about just in terms of the shortest driving distance, not necessarily...
Well, but if I, if I make that a condition of approval, I'm not sure how we would enforce it. So if there's a particular route that represents the shortest distance, I think we need to identify that, and Mr. Kettle, I don't know if you can identify that for us?
Well, my, it's my opinion that the majority of trucks can be oriented towards Route 33 and Howell Road. So again, that's up to the board to decide. I'll mention, you referenced the new warehouse that's being constructed on Fairfield Road. That site plan approval was based on all trucks being oriented to and from the north. Trucks are prohibited from going south down along the local roads. But again, here, we're kind of removed from 33, but again, it's my opinion that you're going to have the majority, if not all, the trucks really oriented towards 33, the tractor trailers. Doesn't mean the smaller box trucks or whatever, maybe more local deliveries, would be oriented towards County Route 524. But again, that's just based on my experience in the area and the traffic patterns.
If I could too, Mr., and I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Leggio, but the other thing is because this is a preliminary approval, I think maybe it would be fair to impose a condition that we still want to hear traffic and the possibility of tenants before they come back for final, so that we get a grasp for maybe what the tenant is. I mean, this has broken out certain percentage office warehouse. What does that mean? Is it one tenant? Is it two? Is it four? I mean, those are things that, you know, I think we can ask this applicant to have a clear picture before they come back to this board for a final approval.
Well, listen, let me just address, Mr. Chen, first. Mr. Chen, listen, if you're a truck driver, right? Okay, I ran a landscape business for 26 years. I put in my NAV the easiest way to get where I want to go, right? And if the roadways are permitted for these trucks to go down, any roadway they want to go down, and I don't want to hear anything about weight limits, a 10-ton bridge, or any of that, because it's all over this town and every other town, every dump truck, every tractor trailer's going whatever way they want, and unless the local police departments are enforcing something, that ain't going to change, okay? So I don't want anything writing, Mr. Kuchere, like that, saying, let's amend this and, oh, the shortest distance, because that could be a nightmare for people on Bennett Road, you know, people on, you know, 524 are going to cut through and then go up to Route 9 going south and then back east, and, you, forget that. You know, I'm just saying, this is my opinion to you. Don't, you know, they're going to put the shortest, oh, let me get out of here, what's my quickest way back to 33? Or my quickest way to Route 9? And that's the way they're going to go, okay? Now, back to the law, as far as the tenants, we don't have tenants. We don't know who the tenants are. So the trip generation is, you know, I don't want to be a smartass, the trip generation is word salad, because if it's a 24-hour operation with one or 10 tenants and it's 11 bays, okay, and they're running nonstop, then this trip generation just went from 42 to 150 or 120 or maybe, I don't even know. So, you know...
Well, if I could, though, to your point, one, the trip generation is set. I mean, that's something that comes out of IT, and so that's, and that's based upon the square footage of these components. But I think that's why I'm sort of saying to the board, look, you don't have that information. They're here for a preliminary. I think it is information that you can, I mean, I would defer to Ron, but as a condition, traffic remains a concern, and so you not knowing the number of tenants, the hours of the operation, maybe the number of shifts, that may be information that we want to see before they come back for final, so that you have a better grasp on what is this office warehouse operation.
But we have no, they have no tenants, right?
But they have to come back to you for final. They're here for preliminary tonight.
But I understand, but, like, look at the big warehouse on Fairfield Road that got built and now it's for sale. So whatever testimony those guys gave on that, on that massive warehouse, that's not even done yet, you know, the road isn't, the poles haven't been moved, the road is still chopped up, so whatever testimony was given on that, as an example, is completely out the window.
No, no, it's not, because a resolution does not issue to a person, it issues to a property. So anyone who may buy that piece of property is bound by the same representations and the same conditions in the resolution as the prior owner. Here, it's the same, so I don't know that this applicant will be the same if there's an approval for preliminary when final comes back. And if it's a different applicant, they are still required to abide by all of the conditions contained in the resolution for preliminary approval, and that's part of the due diligence that a purchaser goes through, and that's part of the due diligence also, frankly, that banks go through when they are considering financing a property. So you don't get out of it by selling, and a seller certainly claiming some sort of ignorance to the process, it's not an excuse, you know, they're still required to follow it.
Yeah, well, you know, my end of, my issue is, is our due diligence to protect, you know, the roadways, which we really can't because that's not in the law, but that's my biggest issue, Mr. Kuchere. We live here. Not everybody here lives here, you know, we live here, but the, you know, not all the professionals live in town or travel these roads, and it's not their problem, it's not anybody else's problem, but the people that have to, you know...
I would say, as your professional, the board's problems are my problems to help you solve.
Well, saying, living here.
And to counsel.
Living here.
And I can't live in all the towns I represent.
Yeah, well...
You know, sometimes my family would like it if I lived in a different town than them, but, you know, can't happen.
I'm looking out for Howell Township, sir, and you do a great job representing us, all right? You do. You're one of the people I like. I don't like everybody, okay? I'll be blunt, you guys know me, so that's fine. But, you know, as your, you know, that's my concern, and your bosses that you have to answer to, you know, maybe, is there any kind of conversation that, you know, we could talk at least at the end of Vandervier? Make some kind of adjustments? Go there and look at the way, it's, you know, a tractor trailer's not making a left-hand turn there without completely crossing over two lanes, and then there's no shoulders. Go there.
You mean, you mean eastbound left or a southbound right turn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a complete, that whole corner, that whole, it's tiny.
It's going to be self-regulated itself, but that is, that is, again, Route 33, that's NJDOT. At Route 524, that's a discussion with Monmouth County.
Mr. Kettle, I know we're beating a dead horse here. As a body, we need to rule on what the law is, and that's really what we're going to do. But, you know, I look at, well, how does a reasonable person look at all this? We want trucks to go to, on Howell Road, to Route 33, when we all know they can't make a turn there? So where's the common sense in that? Okay, listen, the law is the law, and I tell you what, we're trying our darndest to have it looked at right now, but where's the common sense wanting to do that, even from an applicant's point of view?
Councilman, if I could, so, Mr. Kettle, one of the things that you mentioned earlier, and I think we kind of glossed over, I wanted to circle back to it, was a DOT problem... and I think we kind of glossed over, I wanted to circle back to it, was a DOT problem statement. And, you know, would your applicant be willing to enter a DOT problem statement, assuming you had the consent of the governing body to evaluate the intersection of 33, as was brought up here tonight?
I can't, I can't make that representation without speaking with a client who's not here tonight. I mean, that's, it's something I'm sure that the applicant would be willing to work with the board's professionals. But I don't think to put all the onus on the applicant is appropriate. But then again, client's not here, I can't discuss that.
What was the term that you used?
So, the DOT, you can put in what's called, and Mr. Kennel spoke about it before, a DOT problem statement. And the DOT ranks them, and they get put in, and they will respond to them. And I do think, given the comments and given the nature of the applications we have, it is appropriate for the township to make that. My question was, would the applicant be willing to do that? I understand that they can't commit to it tonight on behalf of the township of Howell. But again, something also, the board may be able to impose a condition upon that the applicant's team work with, and it's probably not even so much of the board, although I think the board engineer or my office should be involved, but the municipal officials, your municipal engineer, aren't entering that.
Can I just ask, in terms of who has standing to submit that document, and, you know, putting our ability to impose a condition aside, is that something the township could just do of its own accord?
Yes, yes.
All right. So, I would say to our Class 1 and Class 3 members, that, you know, whether we impose it as a condition, if there is an approval or not, that may be something you may wish to discuss with your township engineer to see if that process can get moving in addition to what has been started through Assemblyman Keen with regard to possible amendments to the municipal land use law.
Okay.
And also, I just, I took a look at the statute while we were discussing some of the associated issues. Delivery in the statute is defined as a merchandise or other property. So, it's really not, you know, a precise, it's a broad definition. So, if you have merchandise or property whose destination is a property within that area of the weight limit, that is an exemption or an exception from the weight limit requirement. I'll take a further look to see whether anyone has ever defined that more precisely.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I hate to bring this up now, not a traffic-related comment, but if I could, is, are these lots to be consolidated with this application?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions of this witness? All right.
Thank you.
That being said, I want to open it up to the public. If anybody from the public has any comments or questions.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Mark Parisi, M-A-R-C-P-A-R-I-S-I.
And your address, sir?
To Castle Court.
Okay, go ahead.
First thing I want to say, I just want to recognize that you guys are back here in person. As many of you know, I've been outspoken about these meetings, returning in person.
We see the packed house.
What's that?
We see the packed house.
Point as well. But I, having been outspoken about it, I do want to acknowledge the board members and the professionals for being here tonight, and just let you know that I appreciate that.
Of course.
But as far as this application's concerned, and what Mr. Cucciaro just said, because Mr. Kennel talked about the statute, and I was like reading the statute, and naturally, you know, there is broader concern about, you know, how we interpret, you know, these trucks accessing roads that are weight-restricted could have broader implications on other projects, not just this one. And I'll just read that statute regarding exceptions that Mr. Cucciaro spoke of. Forty, colon, six, seven, dash, 16, dash, point two exception says, "Nothing in this act shall be construed to prevent such trucks from making deliveries of merchandise or property along streets from which such trucks are excluded, or to authorize the exclusion from any street in any municipality of trucks used by public utility companies in connection with the construction, installation, operation, or maintenance of public utility facilities." So, the way I read it, and I certainly understand, you know, the developer's position is that, you know, they're stuck on industrial court with access to Vandevere and ultimately access to Howell Road to either go north or south. You know, obviously, there's a project, a couple, you know, buildings there that have been operating. But my concern is about, you know, what are deliveries of merchandise and other property along streets from which such trucks are excluded? Like, are, when you say WB62, does that mean that, like, the trucks that are coming to the site to drop off a delivery, and then are they, like, unloading and then hanging out for an hour or two and then loading up another product and then leaving? Like, what exactly is, and again, I'm asking the question, like, is the delivery when the product comes to the building, or is the delivery when the product leaves the building?
This is what I was saying before. The statute is vague in terms of that. So, I need to research to see whether the courts have interpreted that particular phraseology, or whether there are other sections, you know, perhaps in the administrative code rather than in the statute that may have interpreted it. So, the answer tonight is, I find it vague, and I don't, I couldn't tell you directly. So, I would need to perform those tasks.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that's fair enough, because it's vague to me and I'm sure to others that are here tonight. And I just think that, you know, if we're going to be granting either preliminary or final approvals with, you know, vague language about what a delivery is, that we should be mindful of the implications that could have on other applications that come before this point. All right? Thank you.
Anybody else from the public want to come up and comment? With that, I'm going to close. Public comment. Any?
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear in terms of what the applicant is seeking tonight. The applicant has not applied for final approval. So, this would be a vote on preliminary only with the variance in waiver relief that has been placed on the record, as well as any conditions that we've discussed.
Okay. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve preliminary.
I'll second.
Rokul?
Please.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes, with the understanding that we're going to address the concerns, especially, as Ron mentioned, clarifying the relatively vague language around the statute.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes, with conditions.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for your input, and we'll see you back at final.
Yeah, you got some work.
Thank you.
Jen's not here, so, you know, master plan update is whatever it is. I know it's still waiting on the county.
But in, speaking of the next hearing, in the next meeting, we are having a master plan hearing on the farmland preservation plan.
So, okay, so, yeah, I didn't talk to Jen, so I didn't know if it was, if all the information.
Yes, and I sent the.
Because that's all we've been waiting for.
I sent the notice out already. So, it's for June 15th, and as far as.
So, we have no meetings? We have a meeting.
You're going to have a meeting this month?
Okay.
June 15th is our next meeting.
It's still Zoom?
No.
No, we're back live. No, master plan subcommittee.
Master plan is staying Zoom. Our next meeting is June 15, and it's at Middle School South.
Yeah, and I have a conflict of interest, so make sure you have forum.
For the June 15th meeting.
Yes, please.
Okay, we will, we will do that. Thank you for advanced notice.
Do we need?
As far as the master plan subcommittee are staying on Zoom.
Correct, we're keeping those on Zoom.
I will start the Zoom meeting. It will be the same login that we have for the regular planning board meeting going forward, because the public can access it, but there's no comment period, from what I understand.
Just resend it during that time, you know, a couple days before that time.
And if anybody knows if it's being canceled, let me know, so I can put something up on board.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any reason going to executive?
No, but I have a comment, though.
Shoot.
Eileen, we got to get new computers. Luckily, we had paper today, but it's.
Well, to be honest with you, Brian, I didn't even put out computers, because half the people don't use them. And with the new screen, I figured you can see them better there than the computers.
No, I got, I like to have all the notes of the application from there. And this thing's like vintage Vista, Windows Vista. They can't even update this thing anymore.
We don't even have, we don't even have.
Well, it's got 10 on it now, but.
There's eight in the gap, so.
I don't know whether they've got the budget for it, but if we're going to, if we're going to have live, we got to have a computer, please.
If anybody, if anybody wants a computer, let me know, so then I'll put it out. If you don't want it, I'm not going to bother bringing it out.
Okay, all right. With that being said, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night.
Good night, thank you.